Good evening and welcome to the North School Committee meeting of Thursday, November 5th, 2020. Once again, coming at you remotely, this evening, we do have a number of people joining us for our discussion and meeting. So we are welcoming Ms. Segal Reese back, Ms. Kathleen Bishop, Dr. Galligan, and Mr. Longley are all here for appearances this evening. But first order of our agenda is approval of minutes. We do have one set of minutes from our last business meeting on October 21st. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Thank you, Joan. Is there a second?
Second. Thanks, Dan Murray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Upstairs.
Okay, four, zero, and one abstention from Dave Contani. So, Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving right along to our warrant report. Dave, could you share with us the warrants that you signed on our behalf?
Yes, I signed warrants in the amounts of $135,129.41, $44,178.61, $8,840.70, $99,936.22, $50,600.35, $9,785.81, $18 cents, $22,368.6 cents, $208,202.87, $4,779.3 cents, $3,801.30, $1,410.50 for a grand total of $589,032.23.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the committee on those warrants? All right, moving right along to public forum. As a reminder, if anybody from the community has anything that they would like us to read in public forum, that is under the purview of the school committee. You can email us at npschoolcommittee@norad.k12 MA.us. I'm just going to check that email address again right now to see if we have any emails for public forum. And I do not see any. So at 7:35 tonight, I will declare a public forum closed. But if anybody would like to write us for our next meeting, our next meeting is on November 18th. So at this time, we are going to move to appearances. We do have our friends from the Board of Health and Health Department back again. So welcome, Segal. Welcome, Kathy. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Great. Glad to be back again, sharing some more data. So I'll go right ahead and jump into the presentation so we can talk about what's sort of going on on the ground.
Thank you.
Working on it. There we go. Just someone confirm they can see that?
We can see it.
Great, thank you.
Is anybody, I'm sorry, is anybody else getting a lot of feedback or high pitched noise? Can we ask everybody to mute other than Segal, please?
Yeah, thank you, Maia.
Okay, I'll just leave it like that. I was trying to put it in presentation. Sometimes my mic, it makes a humming noise. Is that, is that what it is? Or did it go away?
No, it's still there.
Yeah, it's me. I apologize. If it gets really bad, I can not speak. We'll try to talk over it. It tends to go away. I don't know why it happens. It's off and on. Okay, so it's still, everybody can see that. So back here to report, after, it was here two weeks ago, now this is the third week, we are consistently seeing an increase and continue to be a red community. The report was supposed to come out tonight. That's why we all moved the meeting to Thursday. The state unfortunately did delay the report until tomorrow. And I don't honestly know why. You know, it went from Wednesday to Thursday, now they've moved it to Friday. The data is still pulled on Wednesday, and it does still encompass these dates of the 18th through the 31st. Before we get into it, very quickly, I wanted to go over the updates on the new orders and advisories that were issued this week. The governor presented these on Monday. They actually go into effect on midnight tonight. So there's the stay-at-home advisory, asking people to stay in their households between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Businesses need to close at 9:30. Restaurants can continue to do takeout, but they are closed for service. And alcohol is also not allowed during this period, alcohol service. The gathering order was revised, really addressing gatherings at private residence for indoor gatherings, no more than 10, outdoor, no more than 25. Gathering at venues or public spaces is still 25 indoors. And for us, now after three weeks in red, we are designated, we go back down to phase three, step one. Now, this is a lot of numbers, but the whole point is that no more than 50 people in an outdoor gathering. And those gatherings must end by 9:30. There's some exemptions. And I just want to get into the face covering. So the small change is there is that they removed the six-foot distance. So the face covering order used to state, you must wear face covering if you're within six feet of other people. That obviously is really hard as people are moving around. They simplified the order and just said, you need to wear a face covering when you're, you know, outside of your home regardless of distance and other people. And they also added that employers and schools may require proof of medical exemption if people are claiming that. So just wanted to update everybody on those. Also, before we get into it, we talked about this last time, just what the average daily case count for 100,000, and how they break up the categories. So anything over eight is red, between four and eight is yellow, and then four or less is green for your rate. And with North's population size, you can see the case counts that would include those risk categories. One of the moving targets, the many moving targets and changing policies that we've had to deal with during this pandemic is, Desi has really encouraged us to look at local data and to discuss the school committee and the Board of Health together to sort of determine out policy around how we react to the cases in our community. So now I'll get to what's going on in Norwood. So my calculations, we have in that, again, that two-week period, 57. When the report comes out tomorrow, it might be plus or minus that number. It really depends on exactly what time they run the report and what time I run it. The numbers are constantly kind of going up and down, but it will be within, you know, plus or minus 57 cases. So with my calculation, that comes out to a rate of 13.6, which obviously puts us in the red. Did want to point out, there's no large cluster in town, and I think we talked about this again last time. There's no one thing to point to, to show an increase in cases. Most of the clusters, as we expect, are in households. Actually, I point out here, there are nine households that actually account for almost half of our cases. We have some large households of five people. We have two households of five, so then, you know, that's 10 cases. That'll pretty significantly increase our rate. And we continue to see younger cases and less severe disease. A little different from last time we're here, the age range is much bigger. It's two all the way to 95. Again, we still continue to see ages, you know, most of our cases, 20, 30, 40-year-olds. But we did have a couple cases in the 70-plus range for this two-week period. Eleven of them were school-aged cases. So about 80% of our cases are not school-aged children. Some of them, I'm sorry, that's a typo. I thought that was wrong. Sorry, eight, eight of the cases are school-aged children. Some of them, seven of them are Norwood Public Schools. I'm sorry, that must have been from the last report. I apologize. That 11 is wrong. It is eight. Seven of them are in the schools. We continue to see no transmission in the schools. A little different from last time, we had two cases where we did identify close contacts in the schools this time. One of those is the quarantine periods are almost done, so they're really out of the woods as far as those close contacts converting to cases. So we were very fortunate, and why we did identify close contacts, they did not become COVID-positive and become cases. The second one is more recent, and we were still waiting on those people to finish their quarantines. And really, if someone is going to convert, they're most likely to start, you know, to develop symptoms or test positive around day four or five. But of course, the quarantine is 14 days because you can convert that, you know, 14 days after exposure. But the much, you know, the probability that you're going to convert is much higher in that four- or five-day range. So we're not completely out of the woods with the second case. But at this point, again, no in-school transmission. I added this from last time. We've been really looking locally at our testing data. I think the average daily case rate per 100,000 is one indicator. I think we really need a more diverse view and looking at different things when we're trying to characterize what's happening in our community. I've talked before also about how it is difficult with a smaller population size to really get accurate, good data. But we do our best with what we have. This is really looking at testing data since March. Obviously, we have a lot better testing now than we did in March. And that's the, the blue line is the negative tests that we have. The red line is the positive tests. And the green, sorry, the red bar and the blue bar, the green line is the percent positive. And this is as of last week, because I don't have this week's report yet. They'll all come out tomorrow. And then we'll update this with, with this week's testing rate. But I expect it to be about the same, very low percent positive, which is great, around two or even under two, and that we have a lot of testing going on. And that's good. We want to test, and we want to find those cases so we can isolate and quarantine. So what do we do now? I would say at this point, stay the course. Really, nothing has changed as far as what's going on in the schools from when we spoke last. There are additional cases in the community, but I really don't see any school transmission. We don't see a huge spike in cases of school-aged children. We're actually seeing a wider range in ages. So I think part of the problem with describing this disease in our community is it's, it's sort of all over the place. There's no one thing we can point to. There's no one cluster. There's no one activity that is sort of leading to the rise in cases. It's a lot of little things. It's social gatherings. It's some workplaces where people are in close quarters for long periods of time that, that leads to the spread. There's such a variety of sources. There's not, and there's not one thing I can point to that says, you know, 50% of Norwood's cases are coming from this activity, or that activity, or that workplace, or this industry. And I think the state is working to try and really characterize the cases by trying to release cluster data. But if last week, they started to release that data, and you can really see, it's a smattering of different things. And I think, you know, COVID's throughout our community, and it's showing up in different spaces. And there's really not one thing we can point to, which, which is uneasy. That's, that's not a good feeling. You know, we really want to pin down what activities lead to the, to the transmission, but we just can't. It's just kind of all over the place. But what we're not seeing, and what, you know, the state keeps pointing out, and I think we have seen here in Norwood, that we're not having in-school transmission. We're not having cases going from child to teacher, or teacher to child, or child to child within the school. We have cases in the school, just like we have cases in the community, but it's not spreading in the school. So I think the only thing we can do is really to follow the safety standards, both inside and outside of school. I said this last time, the school is doing a great job with also distancing and face coverings. And we had those two cases with close contacts, but, you know, I'm optimistic that those close contacts are not going to convert. The first case, they did not. And the second one, like I said, we're still waiting. But because of those important policies and that everybody's following the rules in the school, we're really not seeing that transmission, which is great. Been a lot of media attention still on sports. We're still on that ice hockey shutdown for two weeks because they did see a lot of clusters with that. Us in Norwood, we had a few cases linked to hockey, but nothing, you know, nothing huge. Continue, you know, to stress no large gatherings, maintaining social distance, wearing your face covering, hand washing, all those things that we've been saying for months and months. I think last time on my slide, I had Halloween tips. Well, now the Thanksgiving tips are up on the website. And we want to make sure with those holidays that we continue to be vigilant. And I know it's hard, you know, you want to see your family, but we have to make sure to not expose our older family members and loved ones, and also that we don't want to spread the disease by gathering people together. So that is sort of my data presentation. And I just, you know, I keep thinking, keep harping on, that we're not seeing the, the transmission in the schools. And that we're probably at the same place why the community case numbers has gone up. I think that's one indicator. Our testing rates are high, our percent positive is pretty low, and there's no in-school transmission. So I think looking at all those data points are important.
Thank you, Segal. I just want to clarify for anybody watching that, you know, since we first started to talk about this and looking for that trend of three weeks, some things have changed in terms of guidance that we have received. Just so people understand why we may be talking about things a little bit differently tonight than we had set up the conversation for three weeks ago. So Desi was recommending that districts and local Board of Health wait until there was at least three consecutive weeks of red before the discussion of pivoting to full remote happened. And they weren't really clear on what they wanted us to use to make that decision. But last week, Desi has now come out and said that they're not really going by the three-week trend anymore because of the good fact that Segal has mentioned that we're not seeing a lot of in-school transmission. Now, Desi still has not clearly told us what metrics they want us to use as municipalities and school committees to make decisions. But they did really take a stronger stance on just because your three weeks of red as a community does not mean that you pivot to full remote. So I know that there are some people in our community who, when they watch this or hear tomorrow with the official state report that we're on the third week of red, they may expect that we're going to full remote. And I just want to be clear that that's not what we are necessarily supposed to do. So guidance continues to change, and more guidance is coming apparently tomorrow, after our meeting tonight. But with that said, questions, comments, conversation that we would like to have with Segal and with Kathy Bishop?
Teresa, if I could just add to that, and I think we might have talked about it a little last time, was that it's sort of hard to draw that line in the sand based off one indicator. And that why I think it's more difficult for us locally. I think it is more advantageous and better for our community to make that decision locally. It's definitely harder, and it's definitely harder when that line in the sand keeps getting moved. But I think it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a guiding principle, but that we need to look at a lot of things to make, you know, such an important decision.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Segal, for adding that. Joan?
This is a question, but it's really asking you to kind of restate something that you said just in a different way. So we have two cases in the school. We have no school transmission. So that means they most likely, those individuals who are in our schools who are positive, most likely got it from either a family member or at a playgroup outside of the school or something like that.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. During that two-week period, we actually had seven Norwood Public School cases. There are two that, but so there are two of them that had actual close contacts identified from activities in the school. Of those two-
But those seven, okay, yeah. But those seven did not get it. They likely got it from a parent or a friend outside of the school. I'm just restating what you said in a, in a more forceful manner.
Yeah, for sure.
They didn't get it from school. Yeah.
They didn't get it from school, and they didn't give it to classmates or staff. So I can very clearly say that. They got it from, yeah, household contacts or activities outside of school.
And then I was wondering if you could comment. We've seen a lot in the news about the fact that kids who are under 10 or 12 don't transmit the disease as frequently. Is that, I'm just wondering if you have any fact-based evidence around that?
Well, what I can say is that where we see more mild disease, sometimes we see asymptomatic. So people with no symptoms that are testing positive. And if you're not sneezing and coughing and projecting your respiratory droplets, you're less likely to spread it. So that's definitely a factor. And if, you know, someone has one day of symptoms, even though they might be infectious for, you know, a much longer period than that, it's less infectious, I guess we'll say, if they don't have severe symptoms. There's been a lot of data back and forth around not only kids carrying it, but kids transmitting it, and it's changing a lot. So really, we put too much on us in one study or the other. I think what we still want to do, just like with any population, is identify those cases, isolate them, and quarantine their close contacts regardless of age. But there's definitely less severe disease, and that's also not only of school-aged children, but that we're seeing more, you know, tends to be lower ages than what we saw in the spring and really even the summer, younger ages.
Any questions, comments at this time? Maia?
I obviously would prefer it if we had had zero cases in the schools. I mean, that would be lovely if there were no students. But, but it does seem that our numbers seem to be tracking what's going on kind of statewide, which, you know, isn't the trend we would like to see. But, but it seems like, you know, as a school district, we've now been, had everybody in the hybrid model for about seven weeks now. And, and, you know, I think we, like Joan said, we, we've seen some cases in the schools, but we haven't, we see no evidence that the, that they've been getting that disease at the schools or that they're spreading it at the schools. So I feel like we should stay the course and, and keep doing what we've been doing for now.
Dr. Thompson? I am muted. Dr. Thompson?
Well, that's, that's one way to keep me quiet. So you just, just add a couple things. I really want to thank the teachers, the administrators, and especially the students for all of the work that they're doing, following the protocols and listening to their teachers. You know, we've, you know, the system that we set up with the Wednesday day in between has greatly reduced the chance of an overlap with students. And that's part of why we're not seeing these cases going through, so that, you know, we have a 50/50 chance of a kid actually, you know, coming down with symptoms while they're at home. Or they might only have been there for one day or part of one day before there's a break in between. I also want to give a shout out to our custodial staff and our facility staff, as well as Mr. Carty and our nursing staff, of course, for all of their work in keeping things clean. But that, you know, we've got downtimes, if you will. We had that Wednesday when we had the deep clean. We had the deep cleans on Friday and Saturday over the weekend. And, you know, kind of a cooling off people, you know, period between. I think that's been a great help. And of course, you know, our awesome Health Department that I've had more interaction with this year. I think, I think, I think Segal is going to hate every time I call now. But, you know, the Norwood Health Department has been absolutely incredible. The teamwork between our nurses and, and the nurses in the Health Department has been unbelievable in quickly contact tracing and getting the word out. I kind of, I was going to say this from my report, but there are actually three different types of communication that are going out. The first is from me, where you had that general announcement that we do have a positive case, and it's at this particular school. The Health Department is in charge of notifying those that would be considered close contacts, and whether they need to isolate or quarantine. That's another level of communication that happens. If you don't get that phone call, you don't need to do that. And then the other thing that we do is if we have a student that might have been infectious or during that period when we think they could have been, not necessarily, we do let people that know that are in close proximity, same classroom, same sport, same activity. So we do let the families know that, just so they can be, you know, a little extra vigilant, if you will, for symptoms and such. But there are three levels of communication that we're getting out, depending on how involved you would have been in that case. Every single case has gotten, has been reported. There's been nothing that has not, even those that are not even in our schools, we've announced, who have been remote only. And that's just to make sure that the community is informed. And every single time, there's a little message at the end from me about how important it is to wear their masks. And you're basically, if, if they're not in your household and you're out with them, you need to wear a mask and, and keep as much distance as you can. That includes riding in cars, et cetera, et cetera, just like school folks. And we can, we can beat this. We can beat this. We can keep it down if we do that. So, thank you.
I just really want to harp on a point Dr. Thompson brought up about how the hybrid's working. And we've seen that when we've been investigating our cases. Because if they, if they are in school during that possible infectious period, it is definitely reduced, if they are at all even in school, because of that, you know, the Wednesday off and then being in one or the, even Monday or the Thursday cohort has helped a lot with controlling the spread.
Thank you. We do have John Longley and Dr. Galligan with us as well. We asked them to join just in case there were any questions from anybody on the committee or from the Board of Health around athletics. Segal, you mentioned it briefly on your, your presentation that, you know, with us unfortunately going back a step, some of the outdoor gatherings have changed, but that does not apply to athletics. The spectator policy of athletics can still stay the same that it was before, correct? We do not have to change that at this time?
That is correct. That is correct. Our outdoor gatherings are limited to 50, but there's specific sort of sector guidelines for youth sports that we should, that we follow also.
Okay. Any further questions or anything anybody else wanted to share on this topic? So how do we want to continue to move forward since COVID will not be unfortunately going away? You know, I welcome the Board of Health coming to our meetings. But what is just the, the will of the school committee, you know, Ms. Bishop, what is your Health Department looking for in terms of continuing to bring us together? Or how much of the communication do we want between, you know, to be between Segal and Dr. Thompson right now? Just what is everybody's expectation in this partnership over the next couple of weeks? Yeah, Kathy?
I just wanted to say that I think if we stay the course like we are currently, that things are going to stabilize and stay the same. I don't want to rush, and Segal and I have talked about this a lot. We don't want to rush to get the kids back into remote, because once they go in, it's going to be very hard to get them back out again. And a lot of issues come around being remote. It's difficult on parents. It's difficult on the students themselves. It causes a lot of mental health issues, et cetera, et cetera. But the schools have done a great job. I mean, we're all nervous about even having the kids go back to school in September. And just the fact that we have only had seven cases and no, no in-school transmission says that the program's working and that these are all doing a good job. As far as the communication, I think the communication is great. I think we don't need to come to your meetings all the time unless it's a case of, we need to go to remote. You know, because we're seeing more cases in the schools. Segal and I did discuss a little bit about, maybe we need to do some other parameters as far as not just red, yellow, green. Do we need to look at, is it, is it in a specific school? Is it, you know, and do we go put that school in remote? But we can't just say one thing. We kind of have to look at. So I think probably Segal, Teresa, myself, Dr. Thompson, we may have to sit down and like banter out what other things we need to be looking at, just to make sure that we don't make the decision to go back to remote quickly. You know, and there's a lot out there. And I mean, I think it's good for the kids to be in school a couple of days a week. I think it's healthy for them. And if we can just keep doing what we're doing, I think we're doing a great job. And I just think we need to stay the course for right now and not jump, just because our numbers seem to be up a little bit.
Thank you, Kathy. Yeah. I think, Maia, did you have a comment? And then we can go to Joan?
No, go ahead to Joan.
I thought you raised your hand.
I would like to also discuss, I'm going to assume that our measures continue to work and that there is no school-to-school transmission. And I think that at some point, we're going to, we should be discussing how we phase back into full or at least more on campus. So if we have no school-to-school transmission through kindergarten, do our kindergartners go back? Our preschool is back, we're not right now, four days a week. And there's been no transmission and no cases, at least to my knowledge there. So I'm wondering if we make sure that we come up with a good plan to phase back into more in-person schooling where possible. And recognizing that that won't be next meeting, but if we start the conversations now, maybe we can come up with some good strategies around how we could start doing that. You know, by January 1st, March, as soon as possible. No, seriously, like after the flu season's over. So.
Okay. Thoughts on that or other thoughts in general? Maia?
Um, I do agree with Joan that I would love to, to explore that. As you said, like once flu season's over, you know, I know that we can't get everybody in and stick with the six feet. And so there'd be a lot of discussions that would have to happen. And, and, and this is not something that we're proposing, like it would happen quickly or wouldn't be a discussion with a lot of stakeholders. But I do think it's something that, it should be on our list of things to start slowly thinking about. But the other question I, that popped into my head was just kind of more about athletics. And, you know, I wonder if- I wonder if Mr. Longley's still here and if he might be able to tell us a little bit about um how much more time we have left in the fall season and then um what you know, what the thoughts are about the winter season. I know, I believe that there's, the MIAA is gonna be talking about something tomorrow, so there may not be anything to say yet about winter, but just curious.
Yeah, I think Mr. Longley is still on.
Yep, I'm here. How are you guys? Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
Yes, um so since last I, you know, we we joined and talked about the proposal for the fall season, um things have gone, they've been going really well. Um the student athletes and coaches have really implemented the plan that I, you know, put forward to you guys and it it seems to be, you know, working well and not just in Norwood, but throughout the league. There's been a few hiccups in a few different places, but nothing you know, really significant that has uh stopped anyone's season um, you know, for the remainder of the season in the league. So that's, that's good to see. Um you know, we have, as you guys know, we 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 scheduled the games on the weekends in a back-to-back kind of format so that we could kind of contain, you know, who we were competing against in case there was any um cases. And that's been, that's worked out well. There has been a few situations in the league where people were able to use that method to their advantage because of uh potential contact tracing and such. Uh so we've had um we've completed our golf season because the golf season was a little bit different. It wasn't on the weekends because of the access to facilities. So that that season has been completed. We have two more weekends of cross-country field hockey and soccer. So this weekend, uh we'll be uh competing against Westwood on Saturday and Sunday, and then the following weekend we'll be competing against Medfield. So um so we're, we're almost there. Um and you know, we're looking forward to to finishing it off um strong and and the kids, you know, I think have been really attentive to certainly wearing the masks, you know, from day one. It it's been stressful. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna lie, you know, there's a lot, I think, riding on it. And we wanted to make sure we did a a good job and that we kept everybody safe. And I think the kids and coaches understood that. So, you know, not just the mask, but implementing the new rules and procedures that go with uh some of the sports this fall. So um so I've been happy, you know, overall with that. Just to follow up regarding the the winter, Maya, um so tomorrow is supposedly the big day. I guess it's a big news drop uh Friday and not not in in a lot of different areas. So it's actually the EEA is gonna be supposedly releasing their new guidelines for high school and youth sports. And so that's the first step in the process uh to see where we are in regards to our winter offerings. So um assuming that they do release those new guidelines tomorrow, uh then the MIAA's individual sport committees have five school days or or business days to um create modifications based on um the EEA's guidelines. So uh if they come out with guidelines tomorrow, we should know, you know, what sports we'll actually be able to offer uh for the winter. So that would be, that's a great start. You know, I think everyone's anxious to find out because we really don't know, um you know, if we'll be able to offer any or all the sports or 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 a few or what the modifications might be. So we're looking forward to that start tomorrow. Hopefully then the MIAA sport committees will take that info and put their modifications in. And once we start getting that information, we'll start getting it out to the the community and the kids and the parents um to let them know um, you know, when registration is, you know, right now technically the winter season is still scheduled to start on November thirtieth. So that could be the case or that could change. So uh we're we're looking at a busy couple of weeks, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Um any other questions from the committee uh on athletics? Okay.
I will just um uh add to what John said, and this goes in school, but also uh i- in all of the organized sports and activities we've had. What an unbelievable job the students have done um throughout this whole thing, paying really, really close attention to the health and safety measures that we've put in place, respecting them, respecting each other, respecting why they exist. People were were really nervous that this would be an issue. And it has not been an issue um really at all um in school or or um in sports and activities. Uh and I think that's just a testament to um the students and staff and their like their their drive and want to be in school and doing things that are related to school. And I think that's important to to just mention because people have been doing an outstanding job and and it's really a credit to to the students and the staff.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan. So any further discussion tonight on this health and safety topic? That won't be the last time we talk about. Any last messages, Sigal, that you want to leave us or the community with?
Uh yeah, just, uh you know, over the holidays to follow, continue to follow the safety standards, continue to do what you're doing. Um I think uh Kathy laid out some work that we need to do about laying down maybe a a framework locally of, you know, indicators we're gonna look at um to help sort of guide our decision-making process. And we continue the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, uh Sigal, Kathy, John, Hugh, for your time this evening. Uh you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Everybody else does have to stay. Nobody else leave. Um but Dr. Thompson, um I know you started to give some of your update, but do you want to continue with your superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh in the packet is uh is the um enrollment update for the first of November. Um you will see from there that we are up five students overall. Um but you can see the total breakdown there. We're also in the midst uh at the secondary level of uh doing the uh the people who would like to change in or out of the Remote Learning Academy. Remind parents that um if they do not are not are not planning on changing, they do not need to do anything. But if they do want to change, that that process is already started in grade six through twelve. Um in grade eight, uh we have um twelve that are looking to change. We have uh eight wanting to move from hybrid to remote and four to hybrid. So that's a net of uh four more mov- moving to remote. In grade seven, um there are seven moving to remote and one moving to hybrid. So that's a plus six to the Remote Learning Academy at the middle school. In grade six, um we have, oh, you know what? I'm reading the wrong thing. Uh so I'm sorry, I'm reading instead of, it's grade eight, not eighth. So let me start again. Uh there are twelve moving to remote and four moving to hybrid in grade eight. There are two in grade seven moving to remote and one moving to hybrid. Not much movement in seventh grade at this point in time. In uh grade six, there's six moving from hybrid remote and one uh to remote to hybrid. Um at the high school, and again, I will remind everybody that the high school, the big change there is that, you know, it's whether uh students are actually in the seats or not. Um but right now they have about forty-five students uh moving from hybrid to the remote cohort. Um and then we have about six requests to go from the remote to the hybrid. Um so the high school have a total of two hundred and eleven students in the remote only option at the high school. Uh the classes are the classes. It's just whether your seat is coming, uh your butt is occupying a seat at the uh at the high school in the classroom. So that's where we are with that. Um the grade school, uh the elementary grades uh will start in another couple of weeks uh moving, so look for that. I know that uh several of the principals have already sent out notices. And again, if you're not looking to change, you don't need to do anything. Uh we will process those um on a first-come, first-served basis. Uh I will warn people, we do have a few classrooms that again, in the smaller schools are already um pretty packed and there's only a few spots moving uh available in there, which means we might have to move a few people, hopefully not, but to another school. Hopefully we don't have to do that. Um the other piece um I want to talk a little bit about is um strategic objective number five. Of course, I have to find what what where I have that on my tabs here, but we're in the middle of 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 strategic plans, so I wanted to get a little feedback from um. Uh here it is. Um I just found the right tab, so I can know what tab I can share now. Um so we are looking to change strategic objective number five um a little bit. Uh and I'll let it catch up here. Let me know when you can see it.
It's open.
It's open. All right. So this is um Margot is is our lead person on strategic objective number five. And just to remind people, let me pump this up a little bit here. So it's viewable. Does that look better?
Yeah, it's good.
A little bigger?
Sure.
How's that?
That's perfect.
So um so so number five, you know, was about social emotional learning uh in the district. So and if we look at the original one, we've talked about um, you know, basically uh social emotional uh learning and bringing in curriculum for that and training parents on how to support students with that, uh a little bit with trauma-informed. Well, obviously, um we're a little there's been a few changes uh this past spring, especially around culturally relevant and proficient curriculum and practice. So we're looking to uh change that objective, and we haven't really finalized this, but I wanted to bring the whole committee up uh to speed and get some feedback. But uh the proposed overall objective, changing it to uh the thoughtful implementation of social emotional learning and culturally relevant and trauma-informed practice to create a culture of includes care, inclusion and safety for every student and their family in the Norwood Public Schools. Um and then kind of bring it down. And this is just the draft, but develop, uh look at five point one, you see the old and the new there. Develop a pre-K systematic approach to building student and teacher capacity for culturally relevant, trauma-informed and socially emotionally responsible learning. You have a couple of things that we are working on and had been working on and starting to work on this year. Uh for five point two, you can see the old one right there. I'm looking to uh possibly change that to a new five point two or slightly altered to increase district capacity for culturally responsive practices through targeted embed and sustained professional development encompasses all aspects of school life. And you can see some of the things that we are currently working on right now in the district. Uh and we'll need to um expand that over because we're writing a two-year plan. I think there's a third one, yes. Um so the new five point three, build meaningful connections within and support, trust and create an authentic learning community that values strong partnership between schools and families. Uh that's a little bit of a tweak on the old five point three there. Some of those, that's a little more consistent. Um and then um five point five is a highly effective crisis and safety assessment. Um just a revision of that uh a little bit. So if there's any, so I'm looking for comments and feedback to bring back to um this group and make sure it's normally what normally you don't, normally you don't do a ma- a major revision of a strategic objective, but as um climate and culture has changed, um or we've become more aware of that, is probably a better way of putting it, uh we felt it was it was probably a good idea to to make some of those revisions. So looking for feedback from them.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Comments or questions from the committee? Maya?
I think this is an appropriate change. And I also um looking at the um the old like sub-objectives, there was already mention of like culturally responsive and and some things that sort of hinted at or, you know, and and things about crisis and things like that. I don't know that it used the word trauma, but I feel like based on that reading, everything you're talking about is in sort of the spirit of what was included in number five to begin with.
Right, right. Yep. No, I I definitely agree. And some of this is, you know, a function of the training that we've been, and we've been learning more about this, you know, the last um you know, the last few months, um you know, middle of, middle of last year into this year. So that is affecting a little bit of this, plus you know, our our want and desire to to work on these things. So I just wanted to get the committee's feedback before we came back to the next session, because I didn't, you know, obviously the committee would vote and accept the change in its finality, but I figured before they got too far down the road, I would I would look for input. If if you uh get home, uh you know, Saturday morning and want to a- ask a question or have some feedback, you know, don't don't feel you know, locked into just this this fifteen minutes or so. Um then the other thing, I I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want to talk about this, we talked about the building um committee, the uh hang on, I'm gonna stop sharing this.
Yeah, we can talk about the middle school building committee now. It was on the agenda, but we can pull it forward.
Okay, um. So so you you would ask me a question about about the educational planning. So part of, part of this um process with the MSBA, it's not only doing this, part of the feasibility process is coming up with an educational plan uh for what the middle school is going to do, a philosophy, if you will, of how it's going to operate and what the functions are going to be and the things that we want to include in the design. And that really should be a community discussion, especially where we are examining whether this is gonna be a five through eight middle school or a six through eight middle school. Uh five through eight middle schools are a little less common than six through eight. They're not totally um out of uh out of the possibility. In fact, Natick uh is just completing building its second one. Um and the advantage for Norwood is that it would um alleviate some of the crowding that we have at our elementary schools and solve some of the other problems that we have. And ultimately, fifth graders need to be treated like fifth graders and be in the fifth grade area, and eighth graders need to be treated like eighth graders and be in an eighth grade uh area. And those philosophical conversations are important because those should influence that first design uh that we are going to going to look at. Um so that, obviously, we have to pick the designer first, which is coming up uh week from, week from this coming Tuesday, sixteenth, seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
And then from there, once they get on board, that will be one of the first things we probably start at the beginning of of December uh and 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 working on that. So that's the only I wanted to share in the report in my report. And then the last thing I have, and I guess we'll come back to the middle school building piece of the design, designer selection, i- is that one of the ongoing challenges that we are facing as a district is actually hiring uh staff. There are still positions, especially around substitutes, long-term substitutes and paraprofessionals. Um so no, one thing that people are not talking about, and actually after a meeting I had yesterday with other superintendents, we were fortunate that we began our hiring when we did because there are people out there now that are trying to move from the remote to hybrid and hire people, and and the well is dry. Um so you know, we we have, we we have people that are going out out of maternity leave. We do need um some long-term subs. We are still looking for about four or five pairs in the district. Um and if there is anybody out there who is interested in doing that, we would love to, uh we would love to talk to you. But ultimately, there is if there was a teacher shortage before, there is a significant teacher shortage right now. Uh a lot of pairs who've been you know, in the, in, you know, working in schools, waiting for a teaching opportunity, have have gotten that opportunity this year with uh several districts expanding uh their staffing due to the increased need. Um and as I said before, we are looking and talking to several colleagues in the area. We are very lucky. We started that in August because there are people who tried to start in September and October who are not not able to move into a hybrid model because they don't have people to do it. So um you know, we're we're lucky in that we had the support early on, and we decided that we wanted to build something so that we could offer multiple ways of of working with our kids. Uh but we still could use some help in the community. If you're home, if you're looking for a physician, like to work with some really awesome kids, I have about three thousand five hundred of them. Um and we'd love to have you uh join. So that's my commercial for tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Thompson, anything in the update? Okay, um so I would like if the committee is okay just to go slightly out of order with one thing. And before we go into budget, just pull ahead one of the policies um so we can have Ms. Mino participate with us before she needs to um sign off. Is that okay with the committee if we talk about the gender identity policy?
That's fine.
So Ms. Mino, thank you for joining uh joining us tonight. Um if you'd like to tell us a little bit more about this policy.
Sure. Well, it sort of goes hand in hand with what Dr. Thompson discussed with um the strategic plan number five. Um this is where sort of my worlds collide as the Director of Student Services, um in that I also am working on uh number five strategic plan. But um you know, as we um grow and evolve as a district and continue to look at ways that we can support all the students that But, um, you know, as we, um, grow and evolve as a district and continue to look at ways that we can support all the students that we serve. Um, one of the things that has come to light and in conversation with the school committee is thinking about how we serve our LGBTQ, uh, population of students. Um, and one of the things that is important to us is making sure that we are supporting, um, our gender id- identity and gender non-conforming students, um, in, in where they are at, uh, in their, uh, process. Um, in within the schools. Um, and so we, um, in collaboration with the school committee, um, took a look at some neighboring districts and policies that they had come forward with. Um, we also took a look at, uh, some of the advisories that have recently, in recent years, come out of the, um, Safe Schools, uh, initiative of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and have brought forward some, um, proposed language for gender, gender identity support, um, policy, um, that we would like the school committee to consider adopting, um, as part of their policies.
Thank you, Ms. Mino. Um, Dave Katania?
So this is just the first vote, then it's posted and publicly commented that we vote for approval, correct?
That is correct. It would be a brand new policy to the district. So we would take a first vote tonight and it would go on the website for two weeks and we would take a second vote, um, at our next meeting.
Um, I mean, I'll, well, it's open for discussion, but as soon as it's done discussing, I would like to, uh, motion to approve this.
Well, I think you can make the motion. We could second and continue the discussion. So, uh, would you like to make your motion now?
I absolutely would. I am very proud of this policy. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second on Dave's motion?
A second.
Thank you, Mayev. Uh, further discussion? No? Okay. So all in favor of our first vote and pass of file JBD, gender identity support?
Right.
All right, that is unanimous. Wonderful. Great. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mino, for your work on this policy with us.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will come back to the rest of the policy items, um, in a little bit, but we'll go back to our regularly scheduled agenda um, and touch base on budget. Uh, so Ms. Sheridan, would you like to share with us more about the bus contract?
I'm sure. Um, in your packet, uh, you have, um, amendment number two for Connolly Buses. Uh, it adds for reduced per diem rates, um, for the twenty twenty to twenty-one school year due to the change to the hybrid and remote learning necessitated by the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, so the four rates that are being proposed by Connolly Bus is the first is the deferred start hybrid model rate. It is two hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents per diem. Uh, the, I should say the current contract rate is three hun- three hundred and eighty-eight dollars per diem. Uh, the deferred start hybrid model, these are the days that the transportation is not being provided as a result to the delayed start. So, um, in the beginning of the school year, um, when we had some days before the start, the, the regular start date. The hybrid model, no transportation days, uh, those are the, the Wednesdays when there's no transportation. Uh, that would be three seventy-two fifty-two per diem. Um, that's no transportation provided on the remote learning days only. Uh, the parochial school only rate, there were some days, especially at the beginning of the year, where, um, the public schools were not being transported, but the parochial schools were being transported. Uh, that would be three sixty-eight per diem. And then last one is a remote model, a suspended learning rate. Uh, this would be in effect if the district has to go to all remote and that would be two seventeen ninety-three per diem. Uh, the two seventeen ninety-three per diem is at the percentage, um, that we had back um, last year when we had closed from March to June. So, uh, that's a similar rate to what we had back then. So those are the four rates that we, Connolly is proposing. Um, it'll, that would be in effect, um, through this fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Any questions, comments on the bus contract? Mayev?
Uh, motion to approve this contract amendment?
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
All right, five zero. Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Uh, so next, we just wanted to provide a budget sub, uh, subcommittee and FinCom update. Uh, so Maya, would you like to catch everybody up on that, that work?
Yeah, we don't have too, too much, um, today. Um, but the budget subcommittee, um, put together a presentation for town meetings. So, um, that, uh, Dr. Thompson and Ms. Stewart, um, have re- recorded that, um, for town meeting members to watch in advance of town meeting, which of course start is, um, a week from tonight, uh, Thursday, November twelfth. Um, and, uh, we also participated in a, um, Mr. Mizuko's question and answer session, um, in case anybody had questions about that. Uh, we attended the FinCom meeting. FinCom supported our budget request unanimously. So, um, we are looking to, you know, forward to support from, from town meeting. Um, I do want to remind everybody that, um, there's, there's a request, the, um, the yellow sheet lists the total amount of money. Not all of that money would be transferred to the school account. It's all school-related expenses, but some of the money, it's three hundred and eighty-one thousand, uh, three hundred and eighty-some with thousand would go to, would come into the school budget and then the remainder of the money would go into the shared services budget to pay for benefits and things like that. So it's not, um, all coming to the schools. Um, so there's that, that's going on, um, in terms of state-related news. The, um, the State House, um, ca- came out with their draft, um, budget proposal for the, for FY twenty-one, which, yes, that's the fiscal year that started four months ago and we are currently in right now. Uh, but they now have, um, a draft budget out. Um, and from what I could tell with a quick skim, it looks like their chapter seventy proposal matches what the governor's budget proposed. So I think we're still in pretty good shape there. It's, you know, obviously not as much money as we had hoped back in January, but it's more money than we were counting on in June. So, um, I think that's pretty good. Um, Ms. Sheridan, I meant to ask you if you had heard anything about, um, Circuit Breaker?
I think she might have signed off after she gave us the contract.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She, she's not feeling particularly well.
Okay, so, um, so anyway, I don't know that we've heard anything. I have not heard anything about Circuit Breaker yet. That's still an unknown for the year. Um, is there something else that we're supposed to talk about budget-wise?
No, I think that is everything. I'm trying to remember what we talked about last meeting and yes, I think, I think that catches up from when we saw everybody two weeks ago. Any questions from anybody on the committee about our budget work? Okay. So we'll move right along. Um, so under old business, um, Dr. Thompson started the conversation around the middle school building project. Um, but on Tuesday, Dr. Thompson, Alan Slater and I, um, attended the MSBA meeting um, with the rest of the designer selection panel. So, um, Alan, Dr. Thompson and I each had a vote in this process and then there were, um, there's a total of fourteen. So there are eleven other, um, people present, um, from the MSBA who are on this voting panel. And we reviewed the six firms that we have shared with you before who applied to be our designer. Um, and after the voting round, we have narrowed it down to three firms that we are moving forward with to bring into the interview process on November seventeenth. So the three firms who are moving forward are, um, AI Three. Um, AI Three, um, did really stand out so far across the board with everybody on the designer selection process as number one. Um, they got a total of thirty-two votes and ten out of the fourteen voting members ranked it as number one. Um, so we are interviewing AI Three. Um, and then we are also interviewing, um, Doran Whittier and Miller Dyer Spears. And both Doran Whittier and MDS, um, tied for a second, um, with eighteen votes each. Um, so those are the three firms that are moving along into the interview process. Um, we did finalize the interview questions. Um, it was a very quick turnaround. We got off the, the MSBA board meeting on Tuesday and immediately jumped into another meeting, um, with our, um, project manager team from Compass, um, and then MSBA, um, worked on some interview questions. We worked on some interview questions, but they have already been finalized and sent out to the firms. Um, I have been trying to keep all of you updated on any communication that comes in. So as a reminder, Alan Slater, um, is the Chair of the Middle School Building Project Committee. Um, so anytime he sends something out to that committee, I forward it on to the rest of the school committee. So you should have in your emails from yesterday and today, um, all the updated information and the letters that have gone out to the three firms that are going to be interviewed. Um, Dr. Thompson was talking a little bit about the educational planning. That is a huge next step that we do have to start to work on. Um, but any questions from the committee on this ongoing process or feedback on this update? No? Mayev?
Well, first, thank you for all of the work you're doing on this. Um, but, uh, I guess the other question is kind of more about that educational plan and, and you know, as I understand it, that's a pretty major document. We're talking about six, fifty pages. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, has there been a team assigned to, to work on that and are, you know, restarting to schedule some meetings? I mean, I know that we don't yet have the designer in place, but I think it's, we probably can find example, um, education plans and, and, you know, start to look at what are the, the components that we're going to have to do because I, I know that this is due in, I believe, January, right?
The educational planning document, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, we do have a couple of major holidays between now and then.
Couple. Um, we have not put together a team. Um, I mean, I was, I mean, normally, again, I'm this is, this will be my first major building, uh, project as, as superintendent. The last one I was involved in, I was a, I was a intern, uh, for my first, uh, administrative position. But anyhow, so, um, it, it usually is kind of led and you know, you know, examples and, and experts come from the design fil- firm. Uh, but there still is going to be a huge administrative need for collecting information and put, pulling things together. Um, I, I think that we do need to look at bringing somebody in to assist with that process. Um, you know, and, you know, maybe a consultant on, on top of what we're doing to, to close that gap. And theoretically, it wouldn't, it would be something that, you know, a normal central office would be able to do that, but if we haven't noticed, we're not in normal times right now. There's a little extra that we are dealing with. Um, so that's kind of the plan going forward, so.
So we will, um, I mean, related to your question, Maya, but then also related to just the larger project, um, we will have the designer hired by the end of November. Um, and the firms that we are interviewing, um, one of the questions is around this educational planning piece and what expertise can they offer? How would they approach this? There's obviously, you know, as we've talked about before, but Dr. Thompson goals, um, a huge community piece to this and stakeholder feedback. Um, so there is a lot of work ahead. So we would expect and anticipate that the designer selected is part of that, but, um, definitely does not do all of it. Um, so it's a great question. I are asking, you know, what are we doing internally, um, with the superintendent and the principals? And I imagine Laurie Semino would play a role in the planning. Um,
Uh, good. Uh, also, uh, big role for, for Dr. Fraser as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we probably will need someone to, to guide that project from all of us. So that's probably a co-piece that we're gonna need to, need to look at and address.
Are there any specific questions about the educational plan that Maya or others want up to make sure that we look into before the next meeting? Um, to have more feedback on this process? Or just the big question mark of what does it entail? Okay. Dr. Thompson, could you do a little bit more work around this before we meet again on the eighteenth? Just what the process will look like?
I can try. I, I, ho- hopefully, well, I mean, we're not gonna hire the, you know, the, the, the design firm till the seventeenth. So I, I'm not sure when I'm gonna get a chance to meet with them to get some direction. You know, a- a- and the firms, you know, the three firms we're looking at have got strong design design groups, you know, in their, in their, in, in their firm. They have specialized in doing schools. They've worked with the MSBA, so they know what this is supposed to look like. Um, so, you know, perhaps I can, I can find someone that has finished one that might be willing to share theirs from a nearby district, but I mean, how, how that architect has designed it and put it together and what their experts brought, brought to the table might be different, but at least we'll have, we'll be able to put some eyes on, on one, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for looking into that further. Um, other questions or comments around the middle school building projects? So as a reminder, we do have slated on the long-term agenda for December sixteenth that our, um, project manager, newly hired designer and Alan Slater will be coming to that meeting, um, and they will be giving, um, a more in-depth presentation on all of this.
Right.
Okay. Ready to move on or any other questions on the middle school? All right, so we'll move on to policy. Uh, so we already took care of the gender identity support policy. Thank you. Um, but we do have three policies that, um, Joan and I were looking at as a policy subcommittee, um, that just need very minor updates. Um, but we are hoping, you know, we are working on updating our policy manual. Um, as I was just working on the long-term agenda, I realized that, you know, with our recent decision to move the school improvement plans to a two-year cycle, uh, that did actually make us out of, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, accordance. We were not in alignment, um, with our policies. So if you look in our packet at the school improvement plan policy, BDFAE one, and then also the submission and approval of the school improvement plan policy, BDFAE two. Um, we just need to make some very, um, minor edits to that. So the first one, um, you can see on the uh, policy in the packet, I just identified and read, um, where I made the edit. Um, so basically just saying that it's a two-year school improvement plan, no longer an annual one. Um, but it is actually required, um, by law that even if it is every two years, that you do get a written report and an update on it every year. So, um, what it says is the principal in conjunction with the school council shall be responsible for preparing a written two-year school improvement plan and a mid-cycle progress report. Any questions or concerns with that? Um, edit? Motion to approve? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Are we approving both policies?
Let's just start with this one. We'll just go through them one by one.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Bye. Joan, did you say yes?
I did say yes. Sorry, my video is.
No, no, that's okay. I saw, I saw the J move on the screen, so I figured you said yes, but I just wanted to confirm. Okay, so five zero. So then looking at the second one, um, again, just very minor um, additions here as well. Everything is in red that I added. Um, so again, reflecting that it would be every two years, um, and then that on the mid-cycle progress report, um, that it will be submitted. Um, and in this policy, we had to change the timeline because our old policy said that we would be approving uh, school improvement plans by February first. And that has not been our practice in the last couple of years. So we just changed it that the school improvement plans would need to be submitted to the school committee by May first because what our practice has been so far is that we are approving them in May and June. Um, and then with this policy, if you go to, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm moving ahead to another policy. That is it on this one. Just those couple of changes.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Okay, that's five zero as well. Um, third policy, um, you may remember at our last meeting, uh, we started to talk about our, um, school committee goals and one of the discussions at our last meeting was that we were going to use like the function areas as identified in our policy manual. So I was working on our goal documents to get us ready for our November eighteenth meeting and I realized that the policy that we said we were going to use is outdated. So in your packet, if you look at policy BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties, um, the current version in our policy manual is from two thousand and three. There was a policy update from MASC in July of two thousand and sixteen. The five areas that we're responsible for, so legislative, appraisal, provision of financial resources, public relations, and educational planning and evaluation have stayed the same. Um, but what this policy called out, which we already know we do, is around personnel matters and our role of hiring and supervising, um, the superintendent. So, um, again, in red is the additions to the policy from the update. And this is the one, if you scroll to the bottom under the notes section, I, um, strike, uh, some of the language that has been removed.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Dave.
Four years late.
Forget in there. But Dave made the motion. Is there a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Joan. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, five zero. So these three, again, it's just an update. We don't have to vote on it again. Um, but we will have Priscilla add it to the packets, update it on the website. Um, and then I just wanted to ask the committee, um, because we will talk on the eighteenth about our school committee goals. If you could, between now and next Wednesday, um, send me any feedback or suggestions that you have as I work on compiling a document that we can review around our goals and, um, use this policy as the base and think about, you know, the areas of work that we do and what goals we might want to set. That way I can, you know, start a draft document for us to discuss and, um, consider on the eighteenth. So that is it for policies we need to vote on. Um, we did meet as a policy subcommittee on, um, October twenty-ninth and you do have in our packet, um, our minutes and agenda from that, um, I'm not planning to go through it because it really is just an update of all the policy work that we had shared with you at the last meeting, just with adjusted timelines. Um, but were there any questions from anybody on those minutes? Okay, so last piece of policy news, um, brand new as of today. Joan, Dr. Thompson and I did meet, um, with representatives from the MASC today, um, to move the policy audit along. Um, we should have the contract tomorrow. Um, Dr. Thompson and Priscilla have been working on compiling all the documents that MASC needs. They need copies of our policy manual, every handbook, collective bargaining agreements, MOUs. There's a long list of things that they need. Um, but they will review that, start to edit it, determine where we are, what we need to bring in. Um, and we did set up our first meeting with them where this process will officially get started with working together, uh, for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, um, because they need some time to get ready. Um, but we do have that meeting officially set, so we wanted to share that update with you. Um, Joan or Dr. Thompson, anything else that you wanted to add about policy work?
Nope, we've been very busy.
Nope, I'm just particularly glad that we got a date on the books for that audit work to begin. A major victory of that meeting.
Yes, it was. Okay, so that concludes the policy discussion. Uh, we do not have any new business. Um, Dr. Thompson, I don't see any donations this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now we're on to school committee agenda. Um, Anne Marie, did you have anything this evening?
Uh, not this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Maev?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dave Catania?
Nothing, except, uh, just continue wearing masks. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Joan?
Well, everybody, please keep wearing your masks. We like having school.
Thank you. Um, I don't have anything additional this evening either. Um, I do unfortunately have to ask the committee and Dr. Thompson to go back into executive session. Uh, we started the executive session before our meeting here, but we did not finish, uh, discussing different contract negotiations. Um, so I do need a motion to go into executive session. We will only return for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Um, and now I do need to poll individually. So, Dave?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Maev?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so we will enter executive session, um, but to the community, stay safe, stay healthy, and we will be back on November eighteenth. Oh, Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to remind the committee to go back to the earlier, uh, Google link.
Okay. All right, so have a great night, but I will see the rest of my colleagues in just a minute. Thank you, everybody.